Good evening, colleagues. Welcome to this meeting of the Borough Council and welcome back to our beautiful council chamber. Please be seated. I am first required to inform you that this meeting has been recorded and livestreamed. Welcome to those members of the public watching from home. If any member of the public or press would like to record the proceedings themselves, please ensure this is done from the public gallery without interference of the business of today's meeting. As the council is no longer the operating strict social distancing for many of our council meetings and other mitigating precautions to reduce the risk of transmission of COVID-19, flu and other winter viruses amongst elected members, council employees and the public are required... That doesn't make sense. It remains important that all elected members and employees, including those who are fully vaccinated, follow government recommendations and behaviours and actions that aim to reduce the transmission and help to keep people safe. Therefore, I would ask all elected members, staff and members of the public attending today to wear a face covering unless you are exempt. Wearing a face covering in crowded and enclosed settings where you come into contact with people you do not normally meet is one of the government's recommended behaviours and actions. If the fire alarm sounds, can those sitting in the public gallery exit through the doors behind them and those sitting in the council chamber please leave the room by the doors behind me and make your way to the forecourt at the front of the town hall? Staff will assist you with this. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. Members will note that each desk is equipped with an individual microphone. Members must switch on their microphones using the long mic button by pressing speak. Ensure they are close to the microphone when speaking and that they speak directly into it. Members should please mute their microphones to reduce feedback and noise when they are not speaking. May I please ask members, officers and members of the public to limit disturbance wherever possible? Please ensure that all mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silent during the meeting. If a member does speak during the course of this meeting, they may wish to pull down their face masks while speaking and returning it after addressing the meeting. However, this is not a requirement and some members may feel comfortable keeping their face covering on the whole time. Please do whatever makes you feel most comfortable. Can I also take this opportunity to remind members that the code of conduct applies to this meeting and we should at all times demonstrate good conduct? We all have a collective responsibility to live up to the standards expected of us as councillors and community leaders. Councillors who speak will not accuse anyone of improper motives or use offensive language or expressions. Members are reminded that full council today will only deal with the business that is set out on the summons as per the council procedure rules. Members should indicate that they wish to speak by physically raising their hands and by being invited to speak by myself. All other councillors must remain silent while another member is speaking as per the council procedure rules. If the mayor stands during any debate at full council, any councillor speaking at that time must stop immediately and the meeting must be silent. Voting will be managed by the head of legal services and strategy and democracy officers minuting this meeting. If an item does not appear to be contentious, members will be asked whether any member disagrees or wishes to abstain. In the situation where there is any dissension voice, a vote will be taken. If an item requires a vote, the head of legal services will either ask for a show of hands or will read out the name of each member in alphabetical order and ask them how they wish to vote. The head of legal services will record the outcome of the voting and announce it at this meeting. I have received apologies from the following councillors: councillor Boyack, Dick, Foreman and Traynor. Are members aware of any other apologies? Thank you, councillor Jim Su. Can that be recorded, please? The first item of business is declarations of interest. No declarations of interest have been received. Does any member now wish to verbally make any declarations of interest before we move on to the next item of business? Councillor Walsh? Walsh, sorry.
Yes, I think I should declare an interest in item seven as I am a COVID champion and a vaccine marshal, so I thought I'd do that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Malcolm?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Chair and Director of South Tyneside Homes, I have a pecuniary interest in relation to motion three. However, I've been granted dispensation by the Standards Committee and I can remain and participate and vote on the topic.
Thank you, councillor Malcolm. Anybody else? Sorry, councillor Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to declare a personal interest in item five on the agenda. It's not a DPI, so I can stay in the meeting and take part in the vote, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, colleagues. If you have a disposable... I'm sorry, councillor Taylor.
I'd like, because I'm on the board of South Tyneside Homes as well, please, thank you.
Thank you, that will be noted. If you have a disposable pecuniary interest in any item which prevents you from participating in the debate and any voting, you will need to leave the chamber during that item. Once the item has been considered, an officer will come to get you to bring you back to the meeting. The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 6th of September 2021. Are they accepted as a true record? Thank you, colleagues. The next item of business is mayor's announcements or communications. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome to the council chamber councillor Willhurt. I very much look forward to working with you in the future, councillor. It is my sad duty to inform members of the death of a former mayoress, Mrs Sue Foster. Sue was the mayoress for the borough during 1989 and 1990. Many staff and colleagues will know Sue as she worked so closely with the council workforce over many years in her capacity as a union... Sorry, a unison, trade union representative. I know many of us were personal friends of Sue and our thoughts and our prayers are with her family at this difficult time. Colleagues, I know we are all deeply saddened and shocked to hear of the death of Sir David Amis, MP. After the horrific events that took place on Friday the 15th of October. On behalf of South Tyneside, we have sent our sincere condolences to his family and friends at this difficult time. Everyone in public life should be able to go about their daily business without fear of attack. I know elected members will be reflecting upon their personal safety and security when performing their public duties and interactions and we thank officers for the personal safety and security advice and guidance provided. This is perhaps a reminder to us all of our collective responsibilities to work together and the need to be civil with each other, no matter how heated the debate becomes. May I convey my sincere condolences to Sir Amis's family and the people of Lee-on-C? Can I ask members to join me in a minute's silence? Thank you, colleagues. The next item of business is to consider a report of the Chief Executive and Head of Paid Service to amend the membership of committees of the council. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, following the pleading and his bold and ward by-election on Thursday the 9th of September, the political balance of the council has changed. May I take this opportunity to welcome councillor Wildhurt to the council? As a result, the council is legally required to recalculate proportionality to ensure that the committees that are subject to political balance are correctly constituted. Colleagues, the report explains the impact of the by-election in the table at paragraph four, the implications are illustrated by the table at paragraph 10, and the nominations for appointment are listed within the table in paragraph 11. The report also details a number of other matters, including the Contract Performance Panel and to outside bodies. Madam Mayor, I move the report and I would ask colleagues to agree the recommendations set out in paragraphs 30 to 35. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the report and recommendations agreed? The report is agreed, thank you, colleagues. The next item of business is to consider two reports of the head of Corporate and External Affairs requesting dispensations in respect of anticipated non-attendance at meetings. I will ask councillor Atkinson to formally move the report, items 5A and 5B. Councillor Atkinson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, you will note from these reports that council are being asked to consider two applications, one from councillor Peter Boyack and one from councillor Norman Dick, for a dispensation under what is commonly known as the six-month rule. The dispensation will excuse the non-attendance of councillors Boyack and Dick from council meetings whilst they continue on their long journey back to full strength and full recovery from illness without the risk and worry that each member may automatically cease to be a member of the council through failure to attend a council meeting for a six-month period. Madam Mayor, I move both reports and would urge colleagues to agree that the council approve a grant of dispensation pursuant to section 85.1 of the Local Government Act 1972 for councillor Boyack and councillor Dick due to ill health. And may I also take this opportunity to wish both councillor Boyack and councillor Dick well and pass on our very best wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Atkinson. Is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Thank you, colleagues. Is report 5A agreed? Is report 5B agreed? The reports are agreed and dispensations granted, thank you. The next item of business is to consider a report of the Director of Public Health on tobacco control in South Tyneside. I will ask councillor Heatherington to formally move the report. Councillor Heatherington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and colleagues. You all have this report in front of you this evening and I would just like to bring to your attention one or two points. Smoking remains one of the biggest causes of death and illness in the UK with approximately 75,000 deaths each year and over half a million hospital admissions, with many more deaths and avoidable harm due to smoking-related illnesses and complications. In South Tyneside, this equated to 882 smoking attributable deaths in over 35s between 2017 and 2019. Despite the harm and inequality caused by smoking in South Tyneside, significant progress has been made in recent years. Overall, smoking prevalence is now statistically similar to the rest of England at 16.3%, which is down from the formidable of 22.7%. Smoking in pregnancy has also been greatly reduced, in part due to our highly successful smoking in pregnancy incentive scheme, down from over one smoker in every four pregnancies in 2014 to around one in seven in 2019/20. South Tyneside also had the highest rate of quit dates set and confirmed four-week quits in 2019/20, which were among the highest rates in England. Despite this progress, South Tyneside still has some of the highest smoking attributable mortality rates and hospital admissions in the region, and therefore there is still significant work required to achieve the national target of 5% smoking prevalence by 2030. We know that smoking is associated with more severe illness and increased risk of death in people who need hospital treatment for COVID-19, and smokers who get coronavirus are twice as likely to attend hospital and tend to report more symptoms than non-smokers. A more recent study suggests that even light smokers, and that is less than nine a day, are twice as likely to die from COVID-19 compared with people who have never smoked. The report highlights the need for an increased and sustained focus on tackling tobacco-related harm in South Tyneside and calls for support from council to acknowledge and endorse the national recommendations arising from the all-party parliamentary group report on smoking. Endorsement of the recommendations is the first step in a journey which will involve local action to implement the National Tobacco Control Plan, including tobacco regulatory activity. Such leadership sends a clear message to the government that if it is to achieve its ambition for a smoke-free 2030 and a levelling up of society, it will require bold action, and the report outlines things to be included in the National Tobacco Plan. Crucially, this includes making tobacco companies pay to end the tobacco epidemic. It's recommended that South Tyneside council show further support for this agenda by signing the new Local Government Declaration on Tobacco Control when this is relaunched later this year, and this is currently under review at the moment. It's also recommended that council approve the options and proposals within this report for wider support around the tobacco control agenda and agree to support the development of a local plan led by the South Tyneside Smoke Free Alliance based on the National Tobacco Control Plan when this is published. I commend this report to council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Heatherington. Is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I fully welcome this report and its aspirations and the recommendations contained in it, but I would point out that our pension fund has some indirect investments in the tobacco industry through pooled funds it invests in. I understand that the total of those pooled funds is around 75 million and that includes investments in British American Tobacco, Imperial and Philip Morris. I appreciate that this is a small percentage of the overall investments and that the pension fund has a duty to get a good return for pension holders, but I do worry that that sends some mixed messages. If we're wanting residents to quit smoking tobacco, perhaps we need to quit investing in it too. We're talking about a question of integrity and we're talking about people's lives. Just like the argument about divesting from fossil fuels, we run the risk of appearing to say one thing in public and doing something different in private with our pension fund. To quote the author and activist Bell Hooks, 'What we do is more important than what we say or what we say we believe'. Is now the right time to consider re-examining these investments that undermine our responsibilities to residents and find instead more ethical ways to get the returns that our pension holders expect?
Thank you, councillor Francis. Does any of the member wish to speak to the report? I'm sure those remarks will be taken into consideration, councillor Francis. Is the report agreed? The report is then agreed, thank you. The next item of business is to consider a report of the Director of Public Health providing a COVID champion update. I will ask councillor Heatherington to formally move the report. Councillor Heatherington?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, today I'm providing you with an update on the work of the borough's excellent COVID champions who have formed a crucial element of our local COVID response. South Tyneside was one of the five local authority areas in the North East to receive government funding to establish a COVID champions programme designed to help provide information and advice and guidance to the public on all matters relating to the pandemic, our local response and the vaccination programme. Over 70 champions from a broad range of ages, backgrounds, professions and communities were recruited between January and August of 2021, all of whom volunteered their time to go above and beyond to support communities during this pandemic. The champions received training from our partners at First Contact Clinical as well as weekly email bulletins containing current guidance and advice and resources to help them keep their family, friends, colleagues and our community updated and informed. The champions have carried out various activities in addition to sharing information such as engaging in street conversations with the public about the COVID vaccine and as part of the surge weekend activity in August and more recently with the Melissa Bus on the 7th and 8th of October in South Shields Town Centre. In terms of immediate next steps, we aim to amalgamate the COVID champions and the Change For Life champions, to establish an information sharing network and a bank of volunteer champions to be active in the community and at events. A yearly calendar of campaign awareness dates will be produced with a rolling three-month programme. This will focus on COVID vaccinations and recovery, but later evolving to support wider system priorities such as mental health. The champions will provide the support for the Melissa Bus activity, once again coming to South Shields Town Centre on the 4th and 5th of November and also on the 2nd and 3rd of December. The report I am presenting today contains specific details on how we aim to continue and sustain this excellent champions model and to help the people of South Tyneside during our COVID recovery and beyond. Council are asked to support the proposals as detailed in this report, and I would personally like to thank all our extremely dedicated COVID champions for going above and beyond during this unprecedented time, and I commend this report to council, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Heatherington. Is that seconded?
Seconded, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the report which is very comprehensive and I am very supportive of, but I just wanted to raise a concern. COVID has not gone away and we need to recognise that. The increase in cases in South Tyneside and Sunderland, which is where the measured for this week, is up 17% and the number of people hospitalized with COVID is up 15%. This has not gone away and we need to still be considerate to take action and be being very careful, and I'm not sure that returning to the council chamber for these meetings, given the rise in COVID, given that we are moving into the winter months, was the correct decision, and I'd like to ask that that is reconsidered if the cases continue to rise in the borough going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton, that will be noted. Is the report agreed? The report is agreed, thank you. The next item of business is to consider a report of the Corporate Director of Regeneration and Environment on energy and fuel resilience and sustainability. I will ask- I will ask councillor Gibson to formally move the report. Councillor Gibson?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Council will be aware of the recent concerns in the media relation to apparent fuel shortages and potential changes in prices of domestic and business energy. The report provides council details of our current position and highlights our wider energy resilience programme. The council has plans in place to respond to energy and maintain essential services in the light of the current fuel concerns. It is important to set out at no time did the council or its partners need to implement mitigating fuel shortage plans. The business continuity arrangements allows for fuel and shortages. I am pleased to advise that our bunkers of fuel was full at no time under pressure. In fact, as a result of more efficiency vehicles and moving electric vehicles, we have seen a seven-point-five percent reduction in petrol usage. More importantly, we have seen a five percent reduction in diesel usage equivalent to thirty-five thousand litres, which is equivalent to fueling thirty family cars per year. Council will be aware of the drive to become carbon neutral by twenty thirty. This is supported by a five-year action plan, Sustainable South Tyneside, which sets out an action that will remove seventeen thousand one hundred and forty tonnes of CO2 from our operations. Whilst the report focuses on reduction targets, it has also recognised the reduction of our resilience on fossil fuels. You will all notice the increase in our resilience at the same time. To achieve this, we are embarking on an ambitious programme of new model of delivery, low-carbon growth and climate resilience. Renewable energy, the key technology in the areas of investment of the council, will be aware of key projects across the borough, including Viking Energy Centre, Hebbin Mine Water Scheme and Holborn Scheme. I am sure members will have seen the work commenced around the borough, around these sites. This is exciting times for the council and our residents to look forward to reduce fuels as gas and electric from fossil fuels, while looking at the assets in support of South Tyneside businesses in the Green Agenda transition. The council will also explore potential of cutting-edge technology and innovative ways solutions, including hydrofuel, as an investigation continues that will see the mines of future thermal storage, injection water of heat and mine waters raising temperatures from the use for a later date. In addition, the council has also investigated potential incorporating gravity batteries into the mine shaft at Holborn site and enabled impossible generate of electricity, which could then be support Holborn Energy Centre along with other buildings. The Sustainable South Tyneside Strategy looks inwardly at the council's operations and energy use. As a part of this process, we also are working with residents to be more aware of changes in the energy market and the tariffs they pay. It is hoped that following COP twenty-six, the government will announce further support to council to assist in our business, our residents, to improve energy usage while offering a wider financial support for those who need it. In our area, it is also vital that we support investment in skills and in a hard-working community and allow the benefits and prosper through the development of the green economy. Returning to the report, the focus is on energy and fossil fuel resilience. I am pleased to advise council that we understand that some of our vehicles may be currently not suitable for electric motors. Officers are evaluating potential new battery-operated equipment in our street cleaning service. Street washers vehicles is already operating in our town centre. In addition, the importance of the vehicle charging infrastructure is also recognised with ten new charging points being installed next week, six in Jarro and four in South Shields. I hope council will agree that we are at the start of a new era of an energy project, supporting our wider energy resilience with a greater self-sufficiency and demonstrating the plan in the place to deliver our twenty thirty carbon reduction priorities. Madam Mayor, may I ask council to note the report? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Stonehouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Over the last two years especially, we have seen councils totally reacting to priorities which are too many to mention, and in comparison, I can understand why the electric vehicle chargers are right down the pecking order. EV charging is not one of our statutory duties, so it can be a lower priority, particularly given the demands of council resources and the other services they provide. While there are examples of good practice, some local authorities generally do not have plans in place or dedicated personnel or financial resources or even in some cases the appetite to drive forward the EV rollout. So what is the best way forward?
Excuse me, councillor Stonehouse. Can you move closer to the microphone?
Certainly.
Our members can't hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what is the best way forward for our residents who've paid and know they've done the right thing in buying their expensive electric cars to reduce carbon emissions? In July this year, I asked our leader of the council to sign the UK pledge, and I'm delighted she has done so. Most of us agree that the electric vehicle's route is the way forward and ask our councils to support the maintenance. The main issue is that EV owners have not been consulted as to the best location and to the charge of their cars. People on who own their driveways, who have driveways, we wish to pay at the expense for a personal EV charger attached to their home, but what about people without drivers? They are still entitled to support. An example on a personal situation, my friend took her car to the Mill Dam for charging on Tuesday, which was out and not working, then to the charger at the word, which failed as she was actually there. I understand that South Tyneside Homes monitor the maintenance of seven kilowatt EV chargers and another company repairs them. It can take up to seven hours to charge a car on a seven kilowatt charge, so it seems logical to increase the number of EV charging points outside of town centres and put them in more residential areas. Similarly, I understand that fifty kilowatt rapid chargers are repaired by a company who have to travel from outside the area. I'm led to believe that they wait for a number of chargers to break down before they come out to repair them, leaving resident drivers very frustrated. I understand that there is an alternate provider nearby who could undertake some of this work. Madam Mayor, my residents wish to have the answers to these questions. Is there a plan to increase the number of seven kilowatt charging points outside of our town centres? How can we improve the frequency of maintenance and repair of existing EV points to ensure that residents are able to easily access working charging points? And my last question, have we got performance stats of the fifty kilowatt and seven kilowatt EV chargers clearly showing how many of these chargers are functional, how many have broken down and how long it takes to get the repairs completed? Let's see, within about a six-week, six-month period? Okay.
Thank you, councillor Stonehouse. Councillor Gibson?
Councillor Stonehouse, thank you very much. You will receive a written response. Some of your views have already been discussed. You mentioned about breaking down and not being repaired during Covid and through Brexit. Another parts were coming from abroad, which were delayed through that. It has been addressed, we have been discussing it today, and you're quite right about other charging points. A lot of members are raising the same concerns and we're talking about the infrastructure to get South Tyneside moving forward, and you'll receive a written response. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Thompson, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm encouraged to say as a council that we're actively looking at imaginative options for renewable energy, significantly with gravity electricity storage, which surely warrants further investigation with our unique advantage of having existing mine shafts that could enable this technology to be a major source of renewable energy in the region. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would thank the lead member for the for the report, and I would certainly echo councillor Stonehouse's comments about electrical vehicles and charging points, especially in residential areas, people who live in terraces and flats who find it difficult to access those. That said, I think it's worth pointing out that a truly green future isn't one where we simply replace diesel or petrol cars with electric cars or other vehicles. A truly green future is a future with far fewer vehicles on the road altogether and especially private cars. To put this into perspective, almost a quarter of greenhouse gas emissions come from transport. Two-thirds of those emissions are from private vehicles and most car journeys in the UK are less than two miles. Where people are physically able, these journeys would be better made by foot, bike or public transport rather than car, even if those cars are electric. In terms of fuel resilience and sustainability, we need to be investing in active travel infrastructure and ensuring that there's good, reliable public transport available. Secondly, I welcome the fact that the report says the council is looking to diversify its renewable energy sources, including a tradition transition from gas boilers. In the context of sharply rising fuel prices, fuel poverty and climate change, there are win-win options. Investing in better insulation and renewable energy sources means warmer and cheaper to heat homes, more money in residents' pockets and in all likelihood, more money spent in the local economy. What's not to like about that? Stroud District Council recently announced an energy efficiency plan for council housing. This will mean a reduction in emissions of up to twenty-four and a half percent with council tenants saving up to eleven percent on fuel bills and includes a decarbonation and retrofit programme for the council's five thousand properties. At the moment, I understand that South Tyneside Homes properties sit outside of the council's reporting of emissions, even though that stock, the council's essentially the landlord and that stock belongs to the council. If we're looking at energy resilience and renewable energy, is it time to follow Stroud's lead and look to do the same sort of thing for our residents?
Thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Gibson, do you wish to respond?
Thanks, councillor Francis. All your views have been taken on board. A lot of what you have said has already been discussed in our working group, and I will come back here with a written response.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Is the report agreed? Thank you. We'll move on. The next business is to receive questions under Procedure Rule eight. One question has been received under this rule. The question is from a member of the public, Ms Zara McGowan. The question concerns road safety on Beach Road, in particular the stretch between Seaford Terrace and the town hall. The question reads, I understand that the lower speed limit was requested but not granted. If a twenty mile an hour limit is not considered to be feasible in this location, what measures will the council take to address traffic speeds and reduce the potential risk to pedestrians and other road users, especially given that there is a school crossing on this section of the road? As per Council Procedure Rule eight point one point two, the questionnaire will be given a written response within seven days of this council meeting. May I ask that the monitoring officer to ensure that the response is made available to all elected members and is made available to the public by placing a copy publicly available on the questions folder? Thank you. The next item of business is to deal with petitions received under Council Procedure Rule nine. No petitions have been received under this rule. In accordance with the council's Procedure Rule nine point fourteen, the head of Corporate and External Affairs has provided an update on the actions taken in respect of petitions received by council at the meeting on the twenty-second of July twenty twenty-one. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the update report. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleagues, this report provides updates on the actions that has been taken in respect of all five petitions presented to full council at our meeting on the twenty-second of July twenty twenty-one. This satisfies the requirements of the Council Procedure Rule nine point one four. Madam Mayor, I move the report and ask colleagues to note the content of the report for information. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is that seconded? Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Thank you, colleagues. Is the report noted? Thank you. The next business is to receive motions under Procedure Rule ten. Four motions are to be considered under this rule today. I will explain the procedure for motions. I will ask the proposer of each motion to move the motion. He or she may speak for up to five minutes. I will then ask whether the motion is seconded. The seconder may speak up to three minutes or, sorry, reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will then be open to debate by members who may each speak for up to three minutes and may move amendments. Motion one has been submitted by councillor Gibson, Ellison, Heatherington, Port House and McCabe. Councillor Gibson, please present the motion to council.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Between the thirty-first of October and the twelfth of November two thousand and twenty-one, Glasgow and the United Kingdom will play host to the United Nations Climate Change Conference, COP twenty-six. The summit will bring together a range of national and international stakeholders, including the governments of the world with the view to accelerate the actions towards the goal of the Paris Agreement and the UN Framework of Convention of Climate Change. South Tyneside has a strong record to seek mitigating effects of climate change and extend the further than the formal climate change emergency declared in two thousand and nineteen. As a council and leader of place, South Tyneside Council has already achieved a real success in its ambitions to become carbon neutral by twenty thirty. Collectively, as a borough, region, country, we have the duty to engage in the discussion and ensure that we play a key role in ensuring the effects of climate change is significantly reduced and mitigated. This council to resolve marked the historic occasion of the UK hosting COP twenty-six, ensuring the programme of activities is made available to businesses and residents and schools within the borough. Ask the lead member of area management and community safety and head of environment to write to Prime Minister, Right Honourable Boris Johnson MP and Right Honourable Alak Sharma MP, Chair of COP twenty-six, sharing South Tyneside's council climate change strategy and action plan and the Green Recovery Plan, making clear the need for the UK to make resources available to local councils, businesses and residents to achieve the ambitious goal. Ask the leader of the council to raise this directly with the regional partners such as North East Combined Authorities, North of Tyne Combined Authorities and Joint Transport Committee and Local Enterprise. and Joint Transport Committee and local enterprise partnerships. Instruct the chief executive of South Tyneside Council to maintain this as a key priority of the council to ensure that we continue to take steps to seek the opportunity internationally and internally to meet our commitment to tackling climate change. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Is the motion seconded?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm seconding that motion. I reserve my right to speak later in the debate.
Thank you councillor McCabe. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question? Speak or move an amendment? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a Green, obviously I welcome the fact that we're discussing these sorts of issues more and more regularly in the chamber. And I would also say that it would be a very strange world if I were to consider voting against a motion like this. I'd like to applaud the fact that today it was announced that South Tyneside Council has signed up to the UK 100 pledge, something suggested by my colleague Sue Stonehouse back in July. So it would be positive if through resolution three in this motion, our leader could encourage our regional colleagues to do the same. That said, I do worry that some of the motions brought to full council meetings could be seen as making a statement rather than resulting in new action. Resolution one here is already happening. It's taking place the week after next. We committed to this in response to the climate emergency motion in July 2019. This activity was supposed to happen last year and was deferred due to Covid-19. Resolution two, again, we essentially pledged to do this back in 2019. Although the individuals we wrote to might have been different, we agreed to, quote, write to the government to pass the necessary legislation and provide the powers and resources necessary to deliver our climate change goals, end quote. Resolution four, instructing the chief executive to maintain tackling climate change as a key priority for the council. Again, we already resolved in 2019 to, quote, ensure that all council strategic decisions, policies and strategies are in line with shift towards carbon neutral by 2030, end quote. The only resolution here that really contains anything new is resolution three, asking the leader to raise this with regional partners. Given that three of the five signatories for this motion are in the cabinet, I just wonder if we really need a motion to full council for them to get the leader to raise this issue at regional level. In fact, our regional partners in the North of Tyne Combined Authority have already convened a citizens' assembly on climate change and released their recommendations earlier this year. Once again, harking back to 2019, the citizens' assembly idea was something proposed in my original climate emergency motion which was rejected by this council two years ago. As I say, I welcome the fact that we're talking about COP26 and talking about climate change. But when a cap on the number of motions was introduced in May of this year, a colleague said, and I quote, "When resolutions do come in future, they can only be something that the council can actually action, not just take time up", end quote. I argue that we're starting to see a number of motions come to full council meetings that could easily be dealt with elsewhere by the ruling group. And I'm concerned that when this happens, it runs the risk of seeming tokenistic and taking up time that could be better used on new resolutions rather than simply repackaging things we've already committed to. I'm planning to support this motion as these arguably are the most important issues we face today. But I'm keen to see us using motions to council calling for real tangible action rather than what Greta Thunberg might describe as blah, blah, blah.
Thank you councillor Francis. Councillor Gibson, do you want to come back?
Thanks councillor Francis. Everything mentioned on this document today, I guarantee 100%. The council, as you know, has went a lot further than that. You know, we've even produced a school toolkit for the children. And we're going to invent this year, not invent, but put out a business toolkit as well. So we're all 100% behind the green economy in South Tyneside and we're all moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor McCabe, did you want to come back as you reserved your right to speak?
If I'm going to be the last speaker, yes, I certainly will. If there's anybody else wishes to speak first, I will listen to what they have to say. And then I would like to end the debate by me speaking last. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Has anybody else got any questions? Councillor Atkinson?
I just unravel myself. Thanks, Madam Mayor. It's just, I think this is a timely occasion actually with COP26 being so high profile. You know, and I saw someone the other day on social media saying that they're sick of hearing of it and I'm thinking, well, you know, actually this is what you need to hear. And we all need to hear. I honestly don't believe that this is a regurgitation. I think it's a reinforcement. I think we have a new leadership here, both politically and with our chief executive. I think councillor Gibson is also leading the charge where previously I've led the charge. He alluded to the school toolkit, the business toolkit coming online. We are actually also, and I get this might sound as if we're regurgitating, but actually to remind members, the sustainable South Tyneside actions that we have are actually being recognised nationally. And we're in for an award in November, the second award in almost as many months actually. I don't know who else feels that something which is strikingly needy to do, something which we have to, we can't take our eye off, something which is so important to everyone that we can't take this opportunity to reinforce everything that we've committed to and we've made a realistic but very targeted commitment back in 2019. That's two years ago, two and a bit years ago. It's, a lot's happened in that time. And we will have to reconsider how we deliver that financially. But we've got a strong commitment in this council from all sides of the chamber, I will say that. And I think I recommend that we all agree that this motion is carried. And I commend and thank you councillor Gibson for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Atkinson. Councillor McCabe, did you want to say something?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. This subject, you know, is the most important subject in the world. And we're looking to the leaders of the world to resolve this problem. You know, South Tyneside Council is a partner, but it's up to every individual to try and achieve as best they can, you know, the new way forward. Now, you know, I'm not going to quote statistics all night, you probably know all about it anyway. But if the UK tomorrow did everything, got rid of gas boilers, you know, went green, 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 you've got 1% of the 100% in the world of the emissions. That's it. 1% would be achieved. The cost to achieve that 1% is actually trillions of pounds. You know, let's get realistic, you know. Did anybody walk from Beacon and Bent up here tonight or did they drive their big diesel car then come and tell everybody, you know, I'm a green and, you know, I drive a big diesel car and the emissions are terrible and we should all use public transport because I'm a member of the Green Party? You know, let's get real in here, you know. Listening to councillor Francis tonight, if he's soaked as well as he blows, we could drain the lakes of Kildan tomorrow. It's, you know, let's get realistic. It's expensive, expensive. The UK has done everything it can. Councillor McCabe, yes?
Please, can we just tone it down a little bit?
Yes, we can tone it down, but I'm sick of the hypocrisy. The hypocrisy from the Green Party coming in here is absolutely ridiculous. They say one thing and do another. So I think it's right for me to point out the errors of their ways because we all want to be green. And as to quote David Francis from just his last thing here, you know, talking about the previous subjects, you know, deeds speak louder than, you know, deeds speak louder than words and that's what it is. Now, just talking about, you know, things in the world. You know, the average person, inverted commas, whatever the average person is. You know, in the USA, the average person will emit the CO2 emissions of a Nigerian person living in Nigeria for the whole year. The whole year that Nigerian would only emit the emissions of somebody living in the USA over two and a half days. These are the kind of things that are there in the world which the leaders need to take on board. China is the biggest offender. China was opening, 20 years ago when I was with British Coal, was opening up a new mine every four days. India was opening one every five days. And if you look at the statistics, it's the Asian part of it which, you know, they are new, the fossil fuels, the expanding economies, they're the new economies, the same as we were in the Victorian times. So who's to pay for these massive costs? And I welcome what councillor Gibson has brought here tonight. And I welcome the fact that we're trying to achieve some projects as fast as we can. But let's be realistic. We can't achieve everything as a council that we want to achieve because at the end of the day, coming back to the hypocrisy, it is going to cost everyone money, everyone money. Everybody would have seen the news the other night about Malawi and the poor people there with the reducing of the water that they fish in. You know, we can't do everything. We can only achieve what we can achieve. And I recommend this report, I'm supporting this support, supporting this motion, seconding this motion. And I'm realistic as well. I'll try my best in my household to do what I can and I think everybody should try and do that. But let's get real. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McCabe. Is the motion agreed? The motion is agreed, thank you. Motion two has been submitted by councillors Thompson, Milburn, Roberts, Kennedy and Hamilton. Councillor Thompson, please present the motion to council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Some familiar words. As a local authority, we have a responsibility to be as open, transparent and accountable as is reasonably practicable. This creates confidence and trust with the residents of South Tyneside. When I recently became aware of the discretionary fund, sometimes termed leader's fund, I asked for the parameters and criteria of the fund along with records of how the fund had been used. Of course, a discretionary fund available to our council leadership at first sight makes absolute sense. But when I was informed, the fund had no existing criteria, limited records of spending and not reported to council in any way I was concerned. The motion today proposes that this council resolves to make the discretionary fund from the commencement of the 2022 financial year documented with clear criteria and parameters for its use. Ensure the discretionary fund is not used to fund any politically orientated events and have the discretionary fund from the commencement of 2022 financial year be reported on in the annual community area funding report. The resolution for criteria around politically orientated events is because of a situation we had recently where an event was held in Jarrow. This event was held just days before a crucial by-election in Cleeden and Eastbalden. The event was funded from the discretionary fund and the advertised speakers for this event included David John Douglas, known as Danny the Red, a member of the Marxist group Class War, a regular contributor to the Communist Party of Great Britain and former leading member of the Trotskyist Revolutionary Workers' Party. Also Alan Mardgo, who was in the national news before the event for not inviting Tories to the last Durham gala and stating publicly that they weren't welcome. Lewis Mates, a communist and anachosyndicalist who campaigns for direct action to abolish capitalism. These are just some of the names I'm aware of. There may be others. And these are the people, it was advertised, would be sharing a stage with the leader of our council, our mayor and our mayoress. This event with a political slant days before a by-election was funded from the discretionary fund. This, of course, was predominantly an event about our miners and the history of mining, a subject we're all proud of, have family connections to and have interest in. But this political slant has to be noted. Openly reported in the Shields Gazette, saying there is a political slant to this event. This shouldn't have been funded from the discretionary fund and shouldn't have been endorsed by South Tyneside Council just days before the Cleeden and Eastbalden by-election.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Is the motion seconded?
Yeah, seconded, the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Milburn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo my colleagues' comments. We, as elected members, are duty bound to oversee that local authority funding is administered fairly and openly as far as it is reasonable to do so. As my colleague has just alluded to, there seems to be no public record or report that contains both the balances and awards of this discretionary fund. There's no doubt in my mind that this can't be right. There must be some kind of reporting structure in place to at least inform the public of the fund's existence, who and how the recipients are to benefit from the award. Must also be established a published set of qualifying criteria for this funding award. I accept that these discretionary award decisions lie with the leader and deputy leader. However, they must not be opened to all in sundry. Described as the South Tyneside County Council Community Fund, another name for it, it should not support, quote, occasions with political slant, unquote, as the Rebel Town event was reported in the Shields Gazette, 29th of June 2021. In the interest of openness and transparency, I urge all members to do the right thing and vote for this motion this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Milburn. The motion is now open to debate. Do any members wish to speak? Or ask questions or move an amendment? Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is just clearly a point of information for councillor Thompson and councillor Milburn. There was no political motive in supporting this event. It wasn't to support the event in total. It was to support a small community group of a brass band. So just for a point of information, that was what the discretionary fund actually supported, a community event with a small brass band. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you councillor Dixon. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to move an amendment to this motion if possible, please.
Would you like to present the amendment, councillor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The amendment reads as follows. This council notes that as a local authority, we have a responsibility to be as open, transparent and accountable as is reasonably practicable. This creates confidence and trust with the residents of South Tyneside. Currently in South Tyneside council, we have a discretionary fund which is not reported upon and is able to be utilised by the South Tyneside council leader and deputy leader. Currently, the discretionary fund has no documented parameters and or criteria to be adhered to. By way of background, this fund used to be the multi-caf fund for applications covering more than one caf area. This council resolves that the £5,000 discretionary fund be referred to the constitution committee to review with the request that the same or similar criteria and reporting mechanism in line with the caf grant funding is applied. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell. Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't intend to speak at all on this motion until I saw the amendment because my name is on the motion, but possibly for different reasons too. Some of those that have been expressed today, my name was on the motion specifically around the transparency and the openness and the reporting. So I'd just like to make it clear that I do accept the amendment. I think it's a good way forward. And it puts something in place that will make the fund more open, more transparent and people will be able to publicly see what it is being used for and that it's been used correctly. So I just wanted to put that formally on the record.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Councillor Kennedy?
I'd just like to say that when we asked for records of this particular fund, we asked for five years and we were only offered three. This basically needs to, I'm quite shocked at that, and it needs to be reported to the caf, all the details of spending. You know, if you want to be open and transparent, that information's got to be there for the public to see.
I'm sure that the information is in. I'm sure that the lead member will... I'm sure that the information is in, I'm sure that the lead member will get back to you on that, councillor Kennedy. Is that okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Is the amendment seconded? Thank you councillor. Do any other members wish to ask questions or speak on the amendment? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll admit that I wasn't aware of the discretionary fund until recently, but I would certainly agree that council business needs to be open and transparent and that this should be particularly the case in terms of how public money is spent. I'm slightly concerned by the not reported online in the amendment. And I believe that the sums of money we're talking about are relatively small in the context of the council's wider budget and funding. And I'm aware that the word discretionary obviously implies a certain level of independence or autonomy. But that said, I think there needs to be a clear criteria on the parameters in which that discretion can be applied. If we think of the CAF funding as a parallel to this, the proposals are put forward, agreed or not, and that's recorded in the minutes for elected members and the public to see. And certainly I would welcome an annual report on how the discretionary fund is spent in line with the way this comes to CAF meetings at year end. The motion, the original motion called for this to happen from the next financial year, but I can see no reason why that information couldn't be collated and circulated at year end for any final financial year, including as requested the past five years. In terms of referring it to the Constitution Committee, I read all 384 pages of the Constitution today and there's no mention of this in the discretionary fund at present, and perhaps that's a worry in itself. The bottom line is that this is public money and it can be only a good thing to make sure that if this isn't already the case, there are clear criteria for what is and isn't an appropriate use of that funding and that the way it's spent is adequately reported on each year.
Thank you councillor Francis, but you remember at the beginning of the debate, it was stated that this was being referred to the Constitution Committee. Councillor Thompson, do you wish to come back? Okay. Is the amendment agreed? The amendment is carried, the motion is amended, takes the place of the original motion. This is now the substantive motion to which any further amendments are moved. Do any other members wish to ask a question, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Thompson, do you wish to speak any further? No? Thank you. The motion is agreed. Thank you, colleagues. Sorry, is the motion agreed? Thank you, colleagues. The motion is agreed to the amended motion. Motion three has been submitted by councillors Hamilton, Francis, Kennedy, Milburn, Roberts, Thompson and Wildhurt. Councillor Hamilton, please present the motion to full council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And can I just request that I remain seated for this? I'm not feeling, thank you. Madam Mayor, Northumbria Police define antisocial behaviour as any aggressive, intimidating or destructive behaviour that damages another person's quality of life. It can include anything from excessive noise and littering to threatening behaviour and discarded drug paraphernalia. Sometimes what one person sees as antisocial behaviour, a party that's a bit loud, for example, might be seen by others as just a bit of fun. However, I doubt that anyone thinks that using drugs near a school, people hanging out of their windows to expose themselves or someone not only urinating but defecating in the parks or in other people's gardens is just a bit of fun. But these are the types of incidents that residents of Beacon and Bent's and from across the borough are telling me about every week. And this is on top of the almost daily reports of youths banging on windows, intoxicated people trying house and car doors in the middle of the night and abuse and threats that are hurled at residents in the street. This behaviour isn't a bit of fun, it's frightening, it's offensive and I'm sorry to say it's on the rise. When I was elected in 2018, reports of antisocial behaviour were usually about badly parked cars or fly tipping, not behaviour that left people scared to leave their homes during the day, let alone at night. But I'm sorry to say that is where we are now. Yesterday, I read a report in which the police and crime commissioner said that antisocial behaviour had increased 44% this year. And while some of this could be due to Covid, at least three and a half thousand of those incidents weren't. And the residents of Beacon and Bent's could be forgiven for thinking that most of those three and a half incidents happened near where they live. What makes it worse is that 44% rise comes on top of the reported 101% rise the year before. I should point out, this isn't just for South Tyneside, but across the Northumbria Police region. I know that this council is trying to tackle antisocial behaviour, but we do need to do more. I've heard that a scrutiny committee is reviewing our work on antisocial behaviour, but the fact that neither me or my residents knew anything about this work until I had written this motion means we're not doing enough. Antisocial behaviour isn't a problem for one committee, the cabinet or even the council to solve on their own. If we genuinely want to tackle antisocial behaviour, we all need to work together, the council, the police and other statutory bodies. And most important, the residents that we are all here to serve need to be involved. This motion sets out a blueprint or a roadmap to help us do that. It calls for a public consultation and a review of best practice and better training for those of us who are here to support the victims of antisocial behaviour. It's asking us to think a bit differently, to admit that we need to do better because that is what the statistics are telling us. I know that resources are limited, so let's lobby the government for more and call them out when they don't give us what is needed. We need to bring the antisocial behaviour team back in house because this isn't an issue that's about council houses or council tenants. It can happen anywhere in this borough. We need to take tougher action and stand up to these bullies because that is what people who behave in this way are, they are bullies. But Madam Mayor, we also need to recognise that what we've done in the past and what we're doing now really isn't working and the residents of this borough deserve better. Before submitting this motion, I sent it to every single councillor because I wanted this to be a cross-party motion. I wanted every councillor to have their say so that we could bring this motion to this council and work together to tackle antisocial behaviour. I'm a member of the Labour Party, Green Party members, Tory Party members and independents have signed this motion. So in my head, that makes it truly cross-party. So please, let's put our political differences to one side. Let's come together and beat this scourge on our society once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Is the motion seconded? Councillor Francis?
Yeah, I'd second the motion and reserve the right to speak later in the debate if possible.
Thank you councillor Francis. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask questions, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Gibson?
I would like to speak with Madam Mayor but not move an amendment.
Right councillor Gibson, if you want to speak, go let me see.
Thank you. Under procedure ruling 12.8, could I ask councillor Hamilton to withdraw her motion?
On what grounds?
I will lay out the grounds as, you know, antisocial behaviour review is already underway. ABS is a crime and a priority of the council and its partners. You mentioned about partnership working, I will lay out what we're actually doing and you'll see what is actually happening. There are some points within the motion related to criminal activities. This should be reported to the police for their investigation as these matters are over without the council's powers basically and the direct duty is with the police. For example, you mentioned drugs, drug dealing, individuals trying cars, opening windows, doors on houses in the middle of the night. This is a police matter, it's not a council matter. Secondly, we have an excellent working partnership with the Northumberland Police and other partners. As part of the community safety partnership, we operate a strategic level board, tactical matters dealt with through strategy and neighbourhood teams. And at an operational level, a joint tasking group provides coordination and multitasking agency approach to crime and ABS, antisocial behaviour. The tasking meeting meets fortnightly to resolve, manage and merge problems within the area. PCC reported yesterday, as you did state it, but your figures weren't quite correct, they were a little bit different. But also, I've got in April and July this year, there was a decrease of 33% because I was actually on the meeting. Unlike some other neighbourhoods, South Tyneside figures related to drug-related crime has also, has actually shown a 25% decrease, suggested by councillor Hampton, you know, drug-related crimes on the increase. The data appears not to support your assumptions. I would like also to point out how the high level drug crime in community generally comes with high level organised crime, activity and serious violence. But aside from occasionally, there is very little evidence this in South Tyneside. In a pilot area where there's been perceived as problems with ABS, we have also been supported by partners and data intelligence, the council delivered SEAT reported cards, there was over 2,000 of these put out and there was 500 put out in the location you mentioned with the police when we actually went out with councillor Stonehouse. And I think only two were returned, two were responded to. That's how much the data, what the police are getting fed and the intelligence is no crime is happening or very little crime is happening in those areas. There is currently an ongoing review of the ASB policy from South Tyneside and its members and people and members had their views at the overview and scrutiny placed. And also in July and August, there was an ABSA training, antisocial behaviour training day, which you as well given, I think there was nine sessions, which was very poorly attended. Did you go? There was 22 members only attended those sessions and were quite willing to rerun them again, as you did mention about training for antisocial behaviour, as you said for victims. The signposts, the council's got specific officers who deal with that and councillors are not professionals at dealing with people with antisocial behaviour, it needs a professional field. The review of South Tyneside Community Safety Enforcement Team has resulted in the appointment of four new officers, an appointment of assistant manager responsible for safeguarding. Important, the team is already on a month-to-month reduction, close cases referred within six months. The most recent figures for ABSA in South Tyneside shows it's below Northumberland's police force average. As such, all options are needed to be considered to improve ABS services. Offered through it's considered and new proposals must be undertaken in account of a new ABS task force. As is such proposed, the range of options brought back to overview and scrutiny committee and a public awareness. Training, you spoke about training, the community force, the community safety enforcement team, recent arranged members' training around what you called ABSA provision, which we've already mentioned. Victim support is provided directly by councils of victim-first Northumbria. CCTV, you mentioned it, the current equipment is under review. We are changing to a quick fix area because CCT is no quick fix. We are discussing with several suppliers the rapid deployment of battery and solar powered operated, these will be added to the ABS toolkit. They will soon available, but they can be deployed within hours instead of waiting weeks when the antisocial behaviour has went away. You talked about no money, Safer Streets Fund, Regional Fund, over 300k including money for South Tyneside to address violence against women and girls in outdoor spaces called Swan, Safe Woman at Night, North Marine Park, South Shields was the chosen place. Violence Reduction Unit is funding links with workers and vulnerable residents who are struggling with tenancy issues and other issues. Also, we have an HMO review which is still ongoing and will become the conclusion in 2022. It's evident that members are concerned about ABSA. I have highlighted a number of operational changes which affects antisocial behaviour within the near future, the new PCC, ABSA task force and community trigger, otherwise changes ABSA crime provision and legislation is being considered by the government. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Hamilton, do you agree to withdraw your motion?
No, and I reserve the right to, for my right of reply at the end of the debate.
Thank you. Do any members wish to ask questions, speak or move a further amendment? Yes councillor? Councillor Roberts? Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to councillor Gibson for putting that bit over there, come quite well. But isn't it funny now that once the antisocial behaviour has come out, nothing's been done since 2016? And it's just starting to come out now, they're just talking about doing this and doing that. People have suffered for years now and they shouldn't be suffering and it's all down to South Tyneside homes. And there's only one man that's in South Tyneside homes that's responsible for it and that's councillor Ed Malcolm.
I'm sorry councillor.
He has done nothing for anybody for this time.
Councillor, I'm sorry. We're discussing a motion that councillor Hamilton has refused to withdraw.
Yes, but he can sit there laughing, Madam Mayor, but it's there, it's black and white.
I'm sorry, I'm not laughing at you councillor.
I wasn't saying you, I was saying him.
Right, but I'm sorry, we're not.
See what I mean? But like I say, Madam Mayor, we know who's doing it, South Tyneside homes. We've got it down here that councillor Hamilton asked for it to be brought back in the house and I would say that's got to be done ASAP because the length of time that this has gone on and nothing's been done, he's neglected his duties to protect the residents. I would also say he's neglected the residents where we had wardens, mobile wardens.
I'm sorry councillor, who's neglected his duties? Because I think councillor.
No, no, I've not said councillor, I was talking about councillor Malcolm. Neglected his duties. He has done that, he's the councillor, he's in charge of South Tyneside homes, which is in charge of South Tyneside council.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry? You come and make us mister, you come across here and make us. You come over here and try to do something then.
We will not tolerate this sort of behaviour in this council chamber. Councillor Hamilton, you have said you do not want to withdraw this motion.
Are you stopping me talking in my room, are you? I can't speak anymore, can I not?
If you let me finish, when the mayor stands, you remain silent. You know the code of conduct.
You just went to councillor Hamilton, I thought I wasn't allowed to speak again. Sorry?
Okay, I accept your apology. Councillor Hamilton, you refused to withdraw the motion, therefore it was open to debate. But we will not have jeering across this chamber, you know, and personal attacks on people will not be allowed, verbal attacks. So please, you know, our constituents expect us as elected members to behave better. Thank you. Can we carry on with this debate? Councillor Thompson, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to say I think councillor Roberts was questioning responsibilities there when he was talking to councillor Malcolm. Also, on the unreliability of data, I think there was possibly a bit of cherry picking there, but I think we can all agree, pre-Covid antisocial behaviour was on the rise. So that is the reliable data to look at from my point of view. And I'd just like to say antisocial behaviour, under the, because we're talking about police relationships, confused, antisocial behaviour under the Crime and Disorder Act 1998 states that it should be the duty of each local authority to review how they exercise their powers and deliver their services. So it isn't just all police, councillor Gibson, from my point of view. And antisocial behaviour, including littering, dog fowling, are huge issues in our borough. As an authority, our response has been to reduce the amount of CCTV we deploy, bring an end to dedicated dog wardens and completely remove the community warden scheme. I want to quote our own document on community wardens and the impact assessment related to community wardens and CCTV. Direct quote, CCTV is a proven tool in detecting crimes and the perpetrators of it. Using CCTV can significantly reduce the time and cost on the police service in investigating allegations. CCTV captures actual events and is not influenced by interpretation or events as seen by people who are under the influence of alcohol or drugs. Further in the document, in that document, it goes on to ask itself a question. Can community wardens and CCTV? Can community wardens and CCTV realistically deliver benefits? The document answers its own question, yes, and consistently does so. Currently, all that's changed is that the situation has worsened after the removal of community wardens, the removal of dedicated dog wardens and the reduction of CCTV coverage across the borough to combat antisocial behaviour. Thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Thompson, councillor Welsh. You'll need to use a microphone, can you move to the next one please?
That's it, as you know madam mayor, I am a long-serving member of the Northumbria Police and Crime Panel. And I listened to councillor Hamilton's statistics and quite frankly, forty-four percent is not what I've got here. I have the performance headlines from Tuesday's meeting. Yes, there has been an increase in ASB-related incidents, but it's thirteen percent, not forty-four percent. And in the twelve months to July twenty twenty-one, this is compared to the previous twelve month. The majority of this increase is due to COVID nineteen-related ASB. While the ASB excluded COVID has increased by only four percent. Twenty-six percent of these incidents in the current period are COVID nineteen-related. And sixteen percent is youth-related in this twelve-month period compared to seventeen percent in the previous period. But one thing we have decided because of the delivery of the Police and Crime Panel is that as antisocial behaviour is a problem in many parts of the region, the PCC is to create a new antisocial behaviour task force. And she's working with the constituents, they will be working with the constituent councils and other agencies. And that will include South Tyneside homes. And they will bring together involved in making neighbourhood safer, empowering residents and to get their concerns acted upon. So the PCC will send out the required information as and when this antisocial behaviour unit is formed. As we have also got a Violence Reduction Unit which has worked with young people, not just to take them and punish them, but to actually get behind the reason for the antisocial behaviour. And once it's, once these young people realise what they've been doing, their behaviour has improved immensely. So really, I don't think this motion is, is worth keeping, quite frankly, because we have got a lot of work going on. Not just with the police, but with South Tyneside council and South Tyneside homes, we all work together. I've been out many times with councillor Gibson, the council and South Tyneside homes on the wards, looking into antisocial behaviour. And quite frankly, there is quite a bit going on, but some of it is, is basically what we could cope with. Get behind what the children are doing, some of the children that are causing this are bored, there's nothing for them to do. So what we need to do is what we've done in Whitburn with the police. The police have got the young people playing football at Whitburn Academy at weekends. And it's actually reduced the problems that we've had. So things like that is something that we should be working with.
Thank you councillor Welsh, does any other member wish to speak? Yes councillor Milburn?
Thank you madam mayor, on the verge of analysis paralysis here, I'll just give you my view in simplistic terms. For me, antisocial behaviour is deep rooted in, in needs of joined up approaches, we've already discussed, to combat the practice and to make our streets and public places a safe environment. I may comment on my recent personal experience in the successful injunction which was served in recent weeks on my ward. And I honestly feel that after a long time, South Tyneside Homes Tendency Enforcement Team have begun to make some good progress in this area. However, although tendency enforcement is not a straightforward process, as we all understand, it's just the thin end of the wedge for me. We know who these people are in these tendency enforcement cases and where they live. My biggest concern is the people whose identities we can't confirm. The people who frequent our under parks, green space in the hours of darkness, those wearing hoods and masks trying car doors. The graffiti artists, artists for want of a better description, that present our borough in a very bad light. The people that trudge around our green space, leaving behind a trail of discarded plastic bottles etcetera after inhaling god knows what from. The ever-present illegal motorcycles causing havoc in our side streets and green space etcetera, etcetera. So madam mayor, I applaud the, I applaud the community safety partnership for having policies, the strategies in place, but we need to have some, need to see some action. Some physical actions that are within in our remit. The elected members in this chamber, as councillor Hamilton alluded to, need to come together to better support the CSP with these actions. So it's time to get our thinking caps on ladies and gentlemen, because I think it lies within these four wards, thank you.
Thank you councillor Milburn, councillor Roberts, did you want to come back?
Thank you madam mayor. You see, before madam mayor, I was talking about that, of different things that's going on, some it's never been done since two thousand and sixteen. And it is about time that things did start to progress and as councillor Gibson has noted that it is going out. But councillor Gibson also noted about drugs and it being a police matter. This matter at times does come down with South Tyneside homes. I've got two pension, older age pensioners with residential areas on Main where they're putting alcoholics in and drug dealers. And the council, and it's the council's responsibility because they've put them in there and they knew what they're doing when they first done it. And they've got pensioners terrified to come out now. So since two thousand and sixteen, there's nothing being done. And I do appreciate that councillor Gibson now is trying to do something and I do appreciate him, he's been out and he's done a lot with me with antisocial behaviour in my area. But still, we've got places that like the Nook, I think it's your ward councillor.
It is my ward.
There's a lot of antisocial behaviour going on there, the shops are getting robbed every day and the police don't come out. Madam mayor, and you can say what you like, because my daughter, my wife works in there and she's getting abused every day when she goes to work. And the police, they phone the police up and they don't do anything, nothing at all. As councillor Gibson said, we've got to work with the police, there's nothing better than work with the police, but the police don't turn up. We've got people along the way, we are getting threatened with weapons and mourning and stuff, and they phone the police up, we'll come and give you a ring in three days. They stand there doing nothing at all. And the wardens that were taken off the ward, the mobile wardens off, South Tyneside homes, that's the only bit protection the residents had. And they've been taken away from them now, so they've got nothing there at all now because the police don't do anything. They'll say they've got no resources, but they have resources for certain councillors who can just pick their phone up and get in there straight away. And it's a disgrace madam mayor, it is, an absolute disgrace. And you see, the police are doing their best, they're not doing their best at all, thank you.
Thank you councillor Roberts, can I just say on behalf of my heart and moat colleagues and myself, we work in close partnership, not only with the police, but also with the business owners in the Nook shopping area, which you have just referred to. And we have seen a decrease, a decrease in antisocial behaviour. So I don't know where you're getting your statistics from councillor, thank you though for your comments. Well she needs, well she needs to report that to the relevant authorities councillor. Right, well there's nothing that the council can do with regards to the police turning up. Thank you councillor. Councillor Hamilton, do you wish, sorry councillor Francis, did you wish to speak?
I'd, I'd reserved the right to speak later, so I'll, I guess I'll do that now, thank you madam mayor. It's hard to know where to start with this. Some members of the public watching this meeting might wonder if there's been some antisocial behaviour in this room tonight with name-calling and accusations and jeering across the floor. But hopefully it won't get reported to the police or anyone else. I also take some exception to the implication that it's just young people that are involved in antisocial behaviour. That isn't the case, obviously, as I know we know, but I just wanted to make that clear. There is obviously an issue with youth antisocial behaviour.
Excuse me councillor Roberts, can we let, just hear the councillor and then you can come back?
I'm saying, we know it's not just limited to young people and I think that needs to be said, it's an important point to make. I know that with regard to youth antisocial behaviour, that is an issue and some of the schemes like the ones you've described, I've been trying to work with a resident in my ward to get something like that to happen and it's been like wading through treacle, it's very difficult to get anything done. To pick up on councillor Gibson's points about things being a police matter, well that's in the motion. The council resolves to work with the police and other partners to identify methods of tackling antisocial behaviour. It's, it's right there. In terms of the data, we can quibble about the data and whether a particular stat has gone up or gone down. If we're trying to say that things have gone down and try to give the impression that everything's fine, everything's not fine if you talk to the residents and you all know that. You all know that you get regular contact from residents concerned about antisocial behaviour. They are often encouraged to report those things to the police and we know about that postcard scheme that happened and I welcome that that happened. But many residents vocalised to me at that time and before and since, there's no point reporting it to anyone, nothing ever gets done. That's the perception on the ground with our residents and we need to, we need to change that, we need to take action to address that. In terms of the people tackling antisocial behaviour, and I know some things sit with the council and some things sit with the police, but the residents don't necessarily comprehend that, they just see that things are going unchecked, that really should be addressed. Just up the road from here, in the cemetery over there, we've had members of the public who were getting fined in quite an aggressive way for walking their dog off lead. Now I know that's against the rules in the cemetery, but those same people are seeing other residents taking drugs, dealing drugs in the cemeteries and nothing's done about that, and that can't be right. I'm aware of the existing work going on as a member of the overview and scrutiny committee. And I'm aware that despite requests from colleagues, the police were not invited to feed into that work. That specific request was made and it didn't happen. I'm also aware that all colleagues will be dealing with this issue, but won't necessarily have been aware of the work that the overview and scrutiny committee is doing. Those colleagues haven't had the chance necessarily to feed into that work as this motion requests. Similarly, members of the public are key stakeholders here and I welcome the proposal that their views must also be taken into account via a public consultation. Nothing about us without us. I welcome the proposal for additional training for staff and elected members in dealing with antisocial behaviour. I was one of the twenty-two that attended that training, it was very useful. I fully support a call for additional funding for community safety partnerships too. I understand that many other local authorities deal with antisocial behaviour in-house rather than through their housing teams. And while I appreciate that there will be financial implications of a change to the current arrangement, we need to make sure that we've got antisocial behaviour services that are adequately resourced and fit for purpose, giving our residents the confidence that we as a council, with partners including the police, can tackle this issue effectively. Right now, I'm concerned that that simply isn't the case and that's why I'm supporting this motion, I would encourage colleagues to vote for it tonight.
Thank you councillor Francis, councillor Welsh, did you, Welsh, did you want to come back?
Yes, you mentioned about the young people, I'm giving you the stats and it actually stated, I stated that sixteen percent of ASB is youth-related. That leaves eighty-four percent of the ASB as older people and we know that. So you know, that's what I said, so basically, don't pick me up on it. The other thing I have to say is that we, we did a satisfaction survey for people who've had ASB dealt with, not just by the police but by ourselves councillors, and it's seventy-nine percent of ASB victims feel satisfied with their services as a whole. Whole experience satisfaction has remained stable over time. Now in two thousand and twenty, it was seventy-nine percent and in now two thousand and twenty-one, it's still seventy-nine percent. And these are the stats I got on Tuesday.
Thank you councillor Welsh, councillor Barclay, did you wish, I'm sorry, this somebody has. Okay councillor McKay.
I didn't interrupt because I let the discourse take place. Councillor Francis has made an erroneous remark. The overview and scrutiny committee is there to scrutinise what the executive in the cabinet do and the leadership of the council. They ask for the ASB to be reviewed. As a member of that committee, we will have that, we've asked for that review, that review was going to come back to the overview and scrutiny committee. And if we feel as members of that committee that we are not happy with it or we don't understand something or we need something else, put it in it. There is the opportunity to put it in. So for, for your information, as a member of the overview and scrutiny committee myself and all the other members in here, we, it's our duty and our responsibility to do that and we will do that and we are doing that, thank you.
If I could just have a right of reply to that please, could I have a right of reply?
It was a point of information councillor.
I've been said, I've said something that was incorrect, but I don't think I have. Factually what happened.
I'm sorry councillor Francis, you've already spoken and I've said it was a point of information.
The assertion it was incorrect is incorrect.
Excuse me. Excuse me councillor Francis. Councillor Barclay, did you wish to speak?
Thank you madam mayor, I'm one of the councillors for Horsley Hill and it's a point of information. So it's just to say that the issues that have been raised with the police in Horsley Hill have been tackled by the police in Horsley Hill. And I would commend the work that they've been doing alongside us as councillors, thank you.
Thank you councillor Barclay. Councillor Hamilton, do you wish to reply to the debate?
I do, as long as everybody else has finished speaking, because I'm.
Is there any other member wishes to speak?
Because I am the only one with the right to reply, I believe.
Thank you councillor Hamilton.
I didn't withdraw this motion for a number of reasons and I also want to respond to some of the points that have been raised tonight. Drug-related crime is reported, other crimes are reported to the police and sometimes the police do a very good job of tackling them. And sometimes, because as we all know, the police are under resourced, they don't. And I do recognise that not, the council is not responsible for tackling crime, but antisocial behaviour is a council issue. Which is why I specifically stated to work with the police and other partners in the motion. I'm not going to argue about the data, but the police data reported directly to me with regards to my ward is that antisocial behaviour has increased directly in my ward. And I have those figures which I can send to you tomorrow if that would be of use to you. The cards that were put out, like councillor Francis, I was very grateful for them, but on speaking to residents, a lot of them said they hadn't seen the cards or if they had arrived, they'd probably gone in the bin with the junk, the junk mail. So that may be why we don't get the responses to them. I appreciate that there's a new antisocial behaviour task force and a new antisocial behaviour toolkit, I think this is all brilliant news. Unfortunately, nobody told me about it when I circulated this motion for comment on or around the ninth of September. Had that been presented to me then, the motion would never have been submitted because I would have known that there was work going on. And that is one of the main concerns here and that is the concerns of my residents and residents across the whole borough. They don't know what is being done to tackle this because we don't tell people. And we don't have time to wait for something to go through an overview and scrutiny committee and backwards and forwards before actually doing something to tackle this. As for Horsley Hill, the reports that I'm still getting from Westo Crown are that it hasn't been dealt with. And Westo Crown, I live there and it is in Horsley Hill and it has not been dealt with. I handed personally photographs of people dealing drugs outside of the school and using drugs outside of the school to inspect us mails. And there has been some arrests, but it is still happening. And drug paraphernalia is still being left lying around outside of the school on Westo Crown, so it has not been effectively dealt with. The police are doing their absolute best, but we need to work together in partnership. And the public need to be involved and that is the bit that is absolutely missing from the work that we do. We are not involving the public, we are not having public consultations, we are not having public participation and that is absolutely what we need to do. Now you've said that you're already doing work on this and I accept that and I think it's brilliant, but people need to know that and we need to commit to it. Earlier this evening, we passed a motion which I supported, councillor Francis supported, that reiterated work that we were already doing. You said that yourself. So why is this motion any different? Now I am fairly confident that this motion is going to be voted down because I don't think you'll support it. And I don't think it's anything to do with anything that's actually written in the motion. We need to put things behind us, we need to work on this, this is for our residents. If you can look your residents in the face the next time they send you a complaint about antisocial behaviour and justify why you turned this down, why you voted against this, good. Because I absolutely couldn't, because I get, and I'm sorry, you're not allowed a right to reply. a right to reply. I absolutely, absolutely know that residents in this borough across every ward are really, genuinely concerned about antisocial behaviour, and they want us to work with them, and that's the important bit of this motion, to work with them. If you'd stood up there and said to me, "I commit to having a consultation and working with the public", but you didn't say that to me, I would have withdrawn the motion. But I need that commitment.
Councillor Hamilton, you three minutes...
So, please, vote in support of this motion, do the right thing for your residents. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hamilton.
And I'd like to call for a named vote.
Let me get there first. Is the motion agreed? Angela Hamilton?
Agreed.
Right. The motion has not been agreed for the simple reason there's so many people against the motion, as you've heard tonight. And if you requested a named vote, sorry, mouse driving up, a named vote, you will need five representatives to back you.
I request a named vote so that the residents of this town can know exactly how every member of this council voted on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we take a named vote please? Mr Rumley?
Thank you madam mayor. Members, I will read out your names in alphabetical order, and when I do, if you could let me know whether you wish to vote for or against the motion. Councillor Atkinson? Councillor Bell? Councillor Barclay? Councillor Best? Councillor Brady? Councillor Bristow? Councillor Dean? Councillor Dix? Councillor Dixon? Councillor Donaldson? Councillor Ellison? Councillor Flynn? Councillor Francis? Councillor Gibson?
Well done, well said.
Councillor Gibson? Thank you. Councillor Hamilton? I can hear you.
For the residents and the residents...
Thank you. Councillor Hay?
Against.
Councillor Heatherington? Councillor Huntley? Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy?
For.
Councillor Kilgawa? Councillor Leisk?
Against.
Councillor Malcolm?
Against.
Councillor Maxwell?
Against.
Councillor Ne Maxwell? Councillor McCabe?
Against.
Councillor McHugh? Councillor Melling?
Against.
Councillor Milburn?
For.
Councillor Peacock?
Against.
Councillor Porthouse?
Yes.
Councillor Potts?
Against.
Councillor Proudlock?
Against.
Councillor Punchin?
Against.
Councillor Purvis?
Against.
Councillor Roberts?
For.
Councillor Smith?
Against.
Councillor Stonehouse?
For.
Councillor Strike? Councillor Taylor? Councillor Thompson?
For.
Councillor E Walsh? Councillor M Walsh? Councillor Welsh? Councillor West? And councillor Wildhood? Thank you. One moment please.
Excuse me councillor, we're in the middle of taking a vote. Well, no, not when, just let me get this up a little bit. There was nine for the motion and 38 against, so the motion is not carried and not agreed. Motion four has been submitted by councillors Barclay, Melling, M Walsh, N Maxwell and Duncan. Councillor Barclay, please present the motion to full council. Thank you.
Can I just check, madam mayor, can I do my speech now, or do you want me to read the motion out?
Yes, please. Yes.
Do my speech, thank you. None of us can have failed to have been shocked by what is transpiring in Afghanistan following the withdrawal of US and British troops after 20 years of involvement in Afghanistan, which saw the establishment of democracy in the country along with creating stability and economic development, and the rapid abandonment of the improvements which have been made in the lives of so many Afghanes, including women and children, is horrifying. These are rights which we take so much for granted. I feel privileged to have been brought up in a multicultural community in South Tyneside. I am proud that the borough has a history of welcoming those who have fled war conditions as refugees and asylum seekers. The new Afghan resettlement programme places direct responsibility on local authorities to support incoming families through the government's new resettlement programmes. As a council, we currently have over 200 families of many nationalities here in South Tyneside that we support under the asylum process. When the crisis in Syria unfolded, South Tyneside Council facilitated a symposium of stakeholders during 2017. Subsequently, South Tyneside Cabinet resolved to accept children into South Tyneside through the unaccompanied asylum-seeking children programme, and we continue to welcome our quota on the rotation basis that the government has in place today, seeking specialist foster care. Meanwhile, we have concentrated efforts on boosting the infrastructure for the roles arriving in South Tyneside. This includes recent investment in support workers within our children's services team and continued commissioning arrangements with local volunteer-run organisations who support asylum seekers and refugees. We have an incredibly welcoming community in South Tyneside, and it is wonderful to see our community stepping up to support those in need, with a number of volunteers supporting these families with donations of clothing, household goods, school uniforms, bicycles, toys and other items of which families fleeing their home find they are in need. Volunteers also signpost families to schools, local transport, libraries and the government organisations who they need access to progress their applications. They do this without fanfare or publicity, as they again stress the need to protect vulnerable people at their most vulnerable time of need. We are now working to boost the capacity in the third sector, who already have an amazing number of dedicated volunteers who quietly support others. Their contribution is quite humbling, and we are working to use new funding to build on the best that they already offer, which includes cultural awareness and knowledge of existing families of many faiths and backgrounds. We are also investing directly in additional staff resources. South Tyneside has a population of 155,000 residents across 72,000 households. We believe that amidst these large numbers, we can find a very small number of homes for those fleeing for their lives. We have space, and we believe we have a community who will help us integrate new families into a tolerant, strong and safe community. South Tyneside as an authority recognises our place, not just at local, regional and national level, but also internationally at times of crisis. By passing this motion, we can create a legacy that we can give to those who supported us in Afghanistan, those who lost their lives or had their lives irreversibly changed through injury or experience in this conflict, and for the families on all those who lost loved ones. Please support this motion.
Thank you councillor Barclay. Seconding the motion, councillor Melling, I do believe.
Thank you. Excuse me. You may say it's a bit late now to express concern over the actions of the international community with regard to the military withdrawal in Afghanistan, but there is a moral point in doing so. Also, we will hopefully mitigate any sense the military might have that their sacrifices were in vain. We hope to renew our efforts to support them in whatever needs they may have, physical, mental or emotional. From 2.5 million Afghan refugees, the United Kingdom has offered to accept 5,000 people in the first year and up to 20,000 over the coming years. From that offer, 2.5 million remember, from that offer, South Tyneside may take five families. The United Kingdom has actually been accepting asylum seekers from Afghanistan over the whole period of our involvement there. The Afghan Relocations and Assistance Policy was implemented, and this was added to recently by the Afghan Citizens Resettlement Scheme. However, certainly in the North East, I feel we have a humanitarian instinct to help that transcends any legal obligation, and I have personally witnessed great acts of kindness and support, both from individuals and organisations in the third sector. 12 local authorities in the North East have set up a strategic migrant partnership with a link person from each authority. There will be coordinators bringing together the actions of children's services, the third sector and external agencies such as health and the DWP. This coordination will prevent duplication and waste and will maximise the support and comfort given to those being resettled. The government's financial support is not ungenerous, but tapers off sharply over three years. Presumably, the assumption is that those concerned will be settled and integrated and possibly employed after that time. However, the local authorities, partnerships, coordinators and the voluntary sector will have to be ready to continue with whatever work is required. This work must be properly funded, as must the support given to our military personnel, serving or retired. Thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Melling. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question? Speak or move an amendment to the motion. Councillor Francis?
Thank you madam mayor. I'd like to thank those involved in preparing the motion for bringing it to full council tonight, and I certainly welcome the resolutions contained in it. I'd like to propose what I consider to be a friendly amendment, adding a little bit of background context with regard to unaccompanied asylum-seeking children, and adding a slightly more specific action in relation to the resolutions of the original motion. I know that it's been circulated, the written version of the amendment here. Would you like me to read the changes basically? So, what I'm seeking to do is, after the preamble, if you like, before the resolutions, add in a further paragraph that states, "This council notes that local councils have a responsibility to care for unaccompanied asylum-seeking children through the National Transfer Scheme. The government have recently confirmed that they will not be pursuing a mandatory rotor for the National Transfer Scheme, but will offer a small funding uplift, and that the government have closed down a number of safe and legal routes for refugees to enter the country." And then in the resolutions, the amendment seeks to remove the original fourth resolution and replace it with, "Four, take an active part in the National Transfer Scheme, and five, instruct the chief executive of South Tyneside Council to write to the Home Secretary to express the council's dismay at the government's refusal to introduce a mandatory rotor for the National Transfer Scheme, disappointment at the closing of safe and legal routes for refugees to enter this country at a time when refugees need our support, and concern that the wider care crisis means that councils are struggling to fund and find placements for unaccompanied asylum-seeking children." So, to speak on the amendment now, when refugee children or unaccompanied asylum-seeking children arrive into the UK alone, they're taken into local authority care, and once they reach 18, they're looked after as care leavers as per any child in care. This should be a responsibility shared by all local authorities, but in practice, it ends up being concentrated in a small few, with some authorities taking few or no unaccompanied asylum-seeking children at all. I've had the privilege of working with refugee families in our region. In fact, a couple of years ago, I remember coming directly from a session with refugee children and families to a full council meeting here at the town hall. For those of us who've met and spent time with people fleeing from places like Afghanistan, we understand that we're talking about real people and real children in desperate need who we are potentially in a position to help. A resident contacted me in August, having sought some information from South Tyneside Council about this, and that resident was told that at the time we didn't have any unaccompanied asylum-seeking children in looked-after placements, but the regional rotor commits us to one young person annually, and certainly I would welcome the work that has been done so far to support refugees, not just children, but refugee families as well, adults and children. The amendment asks us to pledge to take a more active part in the National Transfer Scheme and to express some additional specific concerns to the government. And I'm just really keen to make sure that, having heard those powerful words that we've heard from councillor Barclay, that we make sure that we continue to walk the walk with regard to this important humanitarian issue. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Francis. Is the amendment to the motion seconded? Councillor Hamilton seconded it. Do any of the members wish to ask a question or speak on the amendment? Councillor Barclay have the right to reply. Is the amendment to the motion agreed? I'm sorry, I can't hear you councillor Barclay.
I'd like to have a vote on the amendment please.
Okay. With a show of hands or a named vote?
I can do it by a show of hands.
Okay. Carry on. Sorry, a vote by a show of hands. John please.
Thank you madam mayor. If I can ask all members who are in favour of the proposed amendment to raise their hands please, and keep them raised until I ask you to put them down. Thank you. And all members who are against the amendment to raise your hands now.
Thank you. Thank you for that colleagues. There are nine members in favour and 38 members against, so therefore it is not carried. The original motion remains as the substantive motion. The amendment is not carried, the motion amended taken place originally, sorry. So it's the original motion that we have voted on, and that is the emotion that has been carried with no amendments. Do any of the members wish to speak or move a further amendment?
Sorry, point of order, you haven't taken a vote on the motion, you just said it had been carried.
Well, that's what we've just done. That was the amendment, if you wait till I come towards councillor Hamilton. We now need to take a vote on the original motion. Would you like to do that by a show of hands or a named vote?
Show of hands.
Show of hands, thank you. Can we do that, John, by a show of hands?
Thank you. Could I ask all members who are in favour of the motion in its original unamended form Thank you. Thank you, and all those against the original motion. Anyone abstaining?
Okay, colleagues, there was 46 for the motion, the original motion, and one abstention, so the motion is carried. That concludes the business of the council today. Can I thank everyone for their attendance this evening, and thank those watching from home for also tuning in? Thank you all, safe journey home.